If we could have a roll call.
Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Here.
And Chair Carwin.
Here. We all rise and face the flag for the salute. Hands of your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any modifications to our agenda this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
Any presentations?
None.
None. Public comments, non-agenda related?
No, sir, we don't.
Fantastic. So that brings us to item number seven, approval of the minutes for February 10, 2016. I was not here, so I don't have a voice in it. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes or a comment to the contrary?
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, the meeting minutes for February 10 shall be approved. No items on the consent calendar. So this brings us to our public hearing section. Item number 9.1, do we have a staff report?
Chairman, yes. Senior Planner Ryan Fowler has a staff report for us on this item.
Ryan Fowler here to present the tentative parcel map for Rite Aid and Archibald's Restaurant. It's parcel map 2015-247. The project site is located on the southwest corner of Menifee Road and Newport Road. The zoning for the site is specific plan, the Menifee Village specific plan. It's planning area 211, which is for commercial. To the south and to the west is also the same planning area. To the north is medium density residential and to the east is commercial. So currently on the site is the Rite Aid Pharmacy and the Archibald's Restaurant is under construction. And to the north is single-family residential homes, to the east is vacant land, but it was approved for a shopping center shops at the lakes. To the south is vacant land, beyond that is the Cali Kirkpatrick School. And to the west is vacant land. So for the project description, the tentative parcel map number 2015-247 proposes a scheduled commercial parcel map of 2.6 gross acres into two parcels. So parcel number one will be the 1.76 gross acres and parcel two will be .84. And the tentative parcel map includes conditions for reciprocal access and parking. So just as a background to this, on October 14th of last year, the commission approved plot plan 2015-031. And that allowed for the Rite Aid drugstore and pharmacy with the drive-through and the Archibald's Restaurant on the same exact project site. At that October 14th hearing, the commission adopted an environmental assessment which evaluated that plot plan. And this project before you tonight has been determined to be categorically exempt per CEQA. So also the grading permits for this project, for the Rite Aid and for the Archibald's project, was issued in December of last year. And the precise grading is currently being conducted there. And the building permits for the Rite Aid building were recently issued and construction is underway. And if you drive past it, you might see the walls are up at that site. The Planning Commission on January 27th, a month ago, opened the public hearing for this item and continued the open public hearing to this date per the applicant's request. And this is a site plan, the green line shows the existing parcel lines. And then the blue indicates how the split would occur, creating the two parcels. So this time, staff recommends, the commission adopt resolution number PC 16247 approving tentative parcel map number 2015-247. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the commission to see if there are any technical questions of staff regarding the staff report. Commissioner Thomas?
Ryan, when we approved this, we had one, a couple of conditions of approval were the traffic improvements that would prevent a left turn in and like a median and some other things and crosswalk and some other stuff that they weren't too thrilled about. And I think they were appealing to the city to not have to do that. What was the resolution of that? Do they still, is it still in the conditions that they have to do those improvements? Or do they argue their way out of it?
There is a condition in there to do the raised median along Menifee Road. I know that was one of the concerns of the commission. So that is included in these conditions as well as the plot plan.
Okay, I was flipping through and didn't.
Is that reflected in the map somewhere? Because I didn't see that.
No, the map doesn't show it, but it is condition 61D, full point one. I looked very specific for that.
Very good job.
That was your recommendation.
It wasn't mine, so.
That's why you get the big bucks.
Kudos to staff for remembering to include it.
Raised median.
And in coordination with this project, when the Stater Brothers across the street was going in, they had agreed to, they had voluntarily conditioned themselves to a lighting from the ground lit crosswalk for the kids that would be crossing there. That's going to be built probably in coordination with this, I assume. Has that, have you coordinated with them? Is that going to be installed at the same time as this median and all that? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I'll hand that over to engineering.
What's that?
I can respond to that. Actually, the crosswalk light is, or lit, lighting of the crosswalk is not recommended by the traffic engineer because you're talking about the intersection of Rockport and Menifee, correct? Because having that lit and having the traffic signal at the same time is not gonna, is actually gonna be confusing for vehicular traffic. And so the traffic engineer has recommended not to implement the lighted crosswalk.
Is there any other additional safety measures other than simply a crosswalk?
I believe there's gonna be a, they've already been conditioned to do some kind of push-button thing at that crosswalk by Stater Brothers, not by Rite Aid though.
Okay. That's it for me.
And we also have any questions of staff?
Yes, just one question. I had submitted some corrections. Will they be incorporated into some of the things that were into this document? Most of my questions were, I mean, my corrections were with the COAs.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other things we had talked about at the prior meeting was some sort of monument sign or placement right on the corner here of Newport and Menifee Road. I remember Commissioner Thomas was talking about that. And I don't see that reflected in the schematics at all anywhere. What happened with that?
We shot it down.
Yeah, you guys shot it down.
Yeah.
We shot it all down?
Yeah.
Okay. And this, the turn on this map that's up here, the turn on Newport, is that going to be right turn only?
It'll have to be, there's a median there, right?
It's right in, right out because of that raised median.
There's a raised median there, it's gonna be right in, right out only, there's no adjustment to that?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Would, do we have the applicant here? The applicant care to speak?
Project Coordinator for Park Crest Construction. I wanted to take this time to thank staff for all their time spent on this project. And it doesn't go appreciate unappreciated. However, I do want to take this time to respectively object to the condition for the required raised median on Menifee Road from Newport to Rockport. Further, I'd like to add, we object to the same condition that was added by the Planning Commission back when the plot plan was approved in October of 2015. The basis for our objection is there really was no nexus indicated by a traffic impact study that this was a requirement, nor was there any fact findings required for that median prior to the Planning Commission meeting. So thank you for your consideration, I just wanted to get that noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on behalf of the applicant or regarding the project? No?
No. Everything else is fine.
All right, so I guess at this point.
Can I ask one other question of them?
Yes.
The parcel to the south that abuts the school, have, is that been, any kind of project planned for that at this time? Is it going into escrow or any design or anything at all?
It's still currently owned by Diamond Brothers Five.
Okay.
And there's no current plans for that.
Okay.
Do we have any questions by the commission for the applicant? Anybody care to raise any issues with the applicant?
Yeah, I have one question regarding the median. So were you accepting the median in the conditions? You're okay with it? Or were you asking us to rethink it?
No, we're not okay with it, we're objecting that condition.
Okay.
Based on the reasons that I stated.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other comments from the commission, I guess at this point, we'll open the public hearing on this matter at 7:11 PM?
It was actually left open at the last meeting when it was continued.
Even better. So do we have any public comment?
We do not.
We do? We do not? Do we have a properly noticed hearing on this?
We do, sir.
All right, and any correspondence received regarding this?
No, sir.
Item? All right. So at this point, I guess we can close the public hearing. That's been left over from last time, it's 7:11 PM. And now is the time for commission comments. Anybody, specifically, does anybody have any comment to make on the objection of the raised median? I think that was something that we all were in favor of, I think that was pretty unanimous.
I can understand their objection due to cost and their desire to have increased car, you know, flow into it, but I think the safety objection overrides that. And so I would support we keep the raised median.
I concur with that.
Any further comment?
Yeah, I have a question. So what was traffic engineering's recommendation on the median?
Well, traffic engineering's recommendation is to keep the raised median. It's determined that it's safer to have a raised median than just a painted median.
So there's no raised median there now, it'd have to be installed with the project?
Correct.
Correct. And that would be our goal? I don't think you were here when we did, because that was in October.
Correct.
The original goal was to try to prohibit traffic from turning left from Menifee Road and cross lanes into the project.
Well, if that's what they were allowing, was left in, but they were gonna prevent a left out.
Right.
And how you do that, I have no idea. So we are just.
They were gonna use a pork chop, which we know is not necessarily always effective.
Yeah, the AMPM Kitty Corner has the pork chop. You sit there for 30 seconds and watch how many cars blow through it.
And actually, the left turn in into the driveway is not feasible because you won't have, you won't have enough length available to do a dual, like two left turn ins into the driveway and then into Newport. You won't have the, you won't be able to accomplish the safe storage length for cars and left turn lane into the driveway and into Newport. That's why the median is supposed to allow only a left turn, left turn movement onto Newport.
Left turn movement onto Newport?
You have to go pass.
Right, from Menifee.
Oh, I see.
Right.
I see. Any further comment or question from the commission?
No.
Well, then I suppose it's time to act on the agenda item. Do we have any motions regarding public hearing item 9.1?
I make a motion to adopt resolutions PC 16247 as drafted.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to make a comment, just following that. I concur with that, but I had some comments that I would like to have included in the final document that I had presented to community development director.
So would we need to then withdraw the motion to approve if we're gonna have further discussion on the commentary?
You could have a discussion now, but maybe Commissioner Phillips could just clarify what his comments were, because I believe they're just typographical ones.
Mostly they're typographical, there were some word changes. And they're very, very, very minor, but they had to do with some syntax and some words that were, in my opinion, somewhat misleading as far as what the regulated entity would need to comply. And some of these items, I think, that are, they're kind of important.
Such as? Why don't you lay some out for us, so we know what we're talking about?
Okay. One of the ones I would like to see is a changing of the sentence in agenda item 9.1, item B, resolution number PC 16247. The bottom paragraph, I'd like to change the sentence in the bottom paragraph, I'll wait till everybody catches up with that.
What are you referring to? What document?
Okay, this is.
Referring to the resolution?
Right, the actual resolution.
Section B to tab B of 9.1.
Right.
Oh, I see. So we're referring, when he's saying B, it means the tab B in the attachment to 9.1, which is the actual wording of the resolution?
Exactly. And my recommendation was to change the sentence to read, "In addition, these users will provide convenience goods and services within a large area designated within the Menifee Village specific plan as a retail commercial center along Newport Road, a major arterial with access to I-215."
Let me just orient everybody, he's talking about the very last paragraph on page two, the very last sentence.
Proposed project?
Yeah, begins the proposed project, I believe he's referring to a typographical error.
Yes. I didn't think to make copies of this. The second one is conditions of approval, section two, page 15 of 37. Section 39, under noise control. And I recommend deleting the word receivers and replace with the word receptors. Receptors or sensitive receptors is a technical term used in government and environmental health regulations for the recipients of adverse impacts to the environment.
What item is that in?
This is section two, page 15 of 37, section 39.
Where is that in here?
You will see, it says receivers.
Oh, here it is.
Yes.
So under, on page 15 of 37, section 39, noise controls, about two-thirds of the way down that initial paragraph, you see the word receivers sitting there on the left edge?
Yeah, and all of the regs that I've worked with. Yeah, and the word is always used as receptors.
Do we have any comment from staff as to why the word receivers was used instead of receptors? Or if it makes a difference to staff? I just want to make sure there's no legal difference between the two that we're stepping on.
I think Commissioner Phillips is correct, it should be receptors.
I think that was just taken from, I think that was taken from the industrial hygiene letter, but I agree, could be changed to receptors.
Yes. Conditions of approval, section three, page 22 of 37. Item A, general conditions. Change sentence one to read, "Businesses that generate eight cubic yards or more of organic waste to arrange for organic waste recycling services." The way I read that document was, it seems like we were requiring the generators to generate that. And that's not exactly the spirit and intent of what that should be. So.
Require businesses that generate rather than two.
Exactly. So.
That is a key distinction.
That is. Section two, change the sentence to read, "The threshold amount of organic waste generated requiring compliance action by the generator shall be or must be reduced in subsequent years." If you can understand where I'm going with that. This is sentence two. Have any comments?
No, keep going.
Okay. Change sentence three to read, "Businesses subjected to AB 1826 shall take."
Right, there appears to be a plus sign there in a grammatical error.
It's like a plus sign there. Item A, in that same area, change the sentence to read, "The generator shall separate organic material." Instead of, I think it has something called source generate. When you're doing environmental regulations, source generate could go all the way back to the original manufacturer. But you want the generator to take the responsibility for separating that organic material. Item B, "The generator shall enter into a contract or work agreement with a gardening, landscaping service provider or a refuse hauler to ensure the waste generated from site operations is disposed in accordance with the requirements of AB 1826." And item C, which is the last one I had, is change that sentence to read, "The generator shall consider zero escaping and/or using drought tolerant, low maintenance in all landscape areas of the project." And here again, I want to emphasize that these are minor suggestions and they are probably, and that the intention of these suggestions was to try to improve the quality of what was being written and presented.
So if those are acceptable, I'd ask that Commissioner Thomas include those in his motion.
Okay. So I may remake my motion to approve, where are we? PC 16-247 as amended by Commissioner Phillips for tentative parcel map 215-247.
Let's take a vote.
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid. Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
That was Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
Chair Carwin.
Yes. It's a small curb. When are we getting chicken? Yeah, when's it opening? Do we have a date?
We're hoping about eight months. We're talking about the Archibald's, right?
Right.
Rite Aid doesn't sell chicken.
Rite Aid sells everything else.
Well, in this flu epidemic, you'll be selling a lot.
All right. Moving on to item number 9.2, public hearing on code amendment number 2016-037, extending time for use of plot plans. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chairman, Lisa Gordon, our planning manager, has a staff report for you.
Good evening, Lisa Gordon, presenting the development code amendment. This came about because our existing ordinance 348, section 18.30, which covers how we process plot plans, how we approve plot plans, and the extensions available for plot plans only allows that plot plans be used within two years of the approval date. And the extensions can be granted to extend the life of the plot plan for no more than five years. So in total, when a plot plan is approved by the approval authority, the maximum life is five years with extensions. We've been looking at whether that five-year life is appropriate. And the economic recession beginning in 2008 severely and negatively impacted property owners in the city of Menifee and continues to impair the ability of property owners to finance new development of their properties. The economy of the city is strengthened by well-planned development of property in order to meet the employment and economic needs of the community. In order to preserve the substantial efforts of property owners to develop new projects, the extensive reviews of those projects by city staff, planning commission, and city council, this amendment to the development code is proposed to allow for the extension of plot plans beyond the provided expiration date if certain findings can be made by the planning commission. So we have some proposed new language to ordinance 348 that would allow for plot plans to be extended beyond the initial five years. The proposed language is in front of you and there's, this would only apply to commercial, retail, or light industrial projects that are non-residential, so not apartment complexes. And it would only apply to plot plans. And it would allow that the commission could extend the duration of a plot plan beyond five years if, that for reasons beyond its control, the applicant was not able to commence construction pursuant to the plot plan within the original approval date, that the applicant has provided substantial evidence to demonstrate that it will be able to complete construction pursuant to the plot plan within the proposed period of extension, and that the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed project will provide positive economic development benefits to the city. Any extension granted would be nunc pro tunc to the date of the most recent expiration date of the plot plan upon the applicant's further showing of good cause for not seeking and obtaining an extension prior to the most recent expiration date. Now, what that means is that this would apply retroactive. If an applicant had let their plot plan expired, this extension could apply to already expired plot plans. As I mentioned previously, the extension allowed under this revised language would only apply to commercial, retail, or light industrial projects, but not residential. We have a couple items for your consideration. They aren't currently in the proposed language, but they're items we think should be included. And one of those is whether or not the additional conditions of approval could be added with the extension. We do recommend that we impose additional conditions as part of the new process. With our existing extension of time applications, we review the existing conditions and add appropriate conditions now. New conditions to address water quality, traffic, road improvements, landscaping, and architecture would be appropriate due to the age of some of these projects. If we're looking at extending plot plans out more than five years, some of these plot plans might have been approved in 2006, 2007, 2008. So these projects get older and the age of the traffic studies, we have changes in road and parkway standards and changes in landscape requirements and changes in architectural style and the quality expected by the city. The second item we're asking for your consideration is whether or not this amendment include a maximum extension time. So staff is recommending that the maximum of eight to 10 years from the original approval date for the maximum life of the plot plan. So a plot plan could be extended eight, nine, or 10 years from its original approval date. We're looking for some feedback from you on that, on how many years you think would be appropriate. Plot plans over this age would be plot plans that have never been reviewed by city staff and may no longer be uses that are consistent with the general plan or zoning. The plot plans are also likely to be inconsistent with existing city ordinances and development standards such as water quality, road improvements, landscaping, and the other items we discussed previously. So at this time, we recommend that we conduct the public hearing and then adopt the resolution forwarding a recommendation to the city council. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gordon. At this point, we'll open it up if there's any technical. At this point, we'll open it up if there's any technical questions of the commission to staff. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go first, actually, because I have this right, I got in just slightly before Commissioner Thomas did. Will there be a fee associated with requesting this extension, and if so, where is that designated?
Yes, our current application fee for the extensions of plot plans is a deposit-based fee, or, I'm sorry, it's a flat fee. It's already in our fee schedule.
So this would piggyback onto that section of the fee schedule? Would need to add a new section of the fee schedule for this type of extension?
We would not need to add a new fee. Applicants would be charged the extension application fee, and then because this extension is approved by Planning Commission, they'd be charged the Planning Commission fee.
And is there any mechanism to assess a fee for a new staff report, an updated staff report, if we're looking at those age issues?
We could recommend a deposit-based fee for the processing of these extensions as opposed to the flat fees, because right now for a plot plan extension and the Planning Commission hearing fee, those are flat fees. It should be about cost recovery, but if we're reviewing the plot plans more in detail to make sure we don't need to update architecture and those other items, it could be a little bit more time-consuming, so a deposit-based fee would be 100% cost recovery.
So would this include like a stepped-up mechanism where staff would make a cursory review, when the extension comes in, staff makes a cursory review to see if there's any age issues on changes in standard before they do a full review? Like, is there an interim level of review that can be put into something like that? Is that too complex a mechanism? If you're gonna do that, you might as well do the whole thing.
Yeah, usually with any extension that comes in, we look at the site plan and then the conditions and add conditions as appropriate.
So that's part of the current mechanism?
It is. With a plot plan, though, that's over five years old, there's gonna be more things to come into compliance on and to look at, especially if we need, you know, updated traffic studies.
Commissioner Thomas?
Two questions. Number one, is there a backlog of these things coming, gonna be coming before us now that we have, is a bunch of these things expiring potentially?
It will depend on how many years you want to go back. There's a handful of projects that I can think of that are plot plans, because this only applies to plot plans. It doesn't apply to any track maps, doesn't apply to conditional use permits. But there are some plot plans in the Romoland area. We, I know of a business park, a shopping center. There's an office commercial center on Encanto. There's another plot plan on Newport and Bradley for a commercial retail center. Those are the ones that pop out to me that are more current. So like 2006, 2008.
Let me bring it up here, I think it's important to have new commission members that when you have these extensions, that is the time to, if we don't like the project, if we don't like what they're doing, to actually change it. There was a philosophy that you had to rubber stamp these extensions, and I think this is an example of, no, we don't have to rubber stamp them, and we can look at the design of the project, even though it is just a plot plan, which is a very basic thing. If we needed to put conditions or something on this, would be the time to do it. Right?
Yes.
To respond to that, Commissioner, doesn't the Subdivision Map Act provide that we do so-called rubber stamp?
Not for plot plan applications. That's for tentative track maps, tentative parcel maps.
On the housing side, maybe that's debatable. That has been a philosophy, but let's say maybe we shouldn't be following that, but this is strictly the commercial side on the plot.
Thank you.
When the staff reviews these, especially some of these previously ones that are approved, with the new development of the approval of the EDC, is that something staff's gonna make sure that everything's in compliance with that?
If you want us to do that, we would make it part of the revised text to the ordinance, and we would do that.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, we spend a lot of time and effort on the EDC, and a lot of people put a lot of their own work into that, that we should at least, if they let it expire or go out, then they should at least comply to our previously approved EDC.
Legally, what is our requirement to make this retroactive? Is there one?
This is all your discretion, basically, at this point. You can make it retroactive, you don't have to.
So, all right, I'm not gonna get into a discussion of it at this time, I just have the technical, any other technical questions of staff at this point? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing at 7:35 PM. Do we have a properly noticed hearing?
Yes, sir, we do.
Do we have any public speakers on this issue?
We do not have speakers.
Any correspondence received?
No, sir.
All right, and is there an applicant associated with this? Is it the city?
Yeah, it's the city.
We've already heard from the staff report, I guess, of the city. So at this point, I guess we can close the public hearing at 7:36. And now we can hear from the commission on your thoughts on it and what we might need to add or not add to this. Commissioner Thomas?
I agree with the retroactive, because I think the purpose of this is to not inhibit good projects that may have been sitting there due to the economy, and we want to be business-friendly, right? That's kind of the purpose of this, so I'm for retroactive, as long as it's at the discretion of the commission and it's not a mandatory provision. I'm also for the extension of no more than 10 years from the initial application date. Basically, we're saying, okay, the comment is coming around, you got five years to do something. Right? So I'm for that.
I concur with the idea of adding or replacing the fee structure with a deposit-based review fees. To me, I think that would be much better on both sides of the fence, the applicant as well as the staff in the review process, so I'm looking at being in favor of a deposit-based fee.
Yeah, I agree with that, because that way, if we see the need of staff sees the need for a more in-depth report, you can just go ahead and do it, as opposed to having to go back and exchange and adding multiple layers and steps to things. I would probably allow retroactivity with that 10-year maximum, but commencing on projects that were approved after incorporation. Because that way, if we go back 10 years, we can have pre-incorporation, and that opens a can of worms, whereas if we, we put the 10-year limit in going into the future, but starting today, however, no earlier than approvals made during incorporation period. So that way, at least we know the staff reviewed it at that point, we don't have to worry about that other step. Does that sound reasonable?
Makes sense. Are there some specific projects that that would be prohibitive? Do you know of any, Lisa?
The only project I'm, well, the two I mentioned had been approved prior to the city's incorporation. One was a business park on Trumbull in 74 that surrounds the Jack in the Box and Arco Station, and then the other is a commercial retail site at Bradley in Newport.
Does that kind of close your research day of wanting to go back and grab those? Basically, we don't give it to them, they're gonna have to apply all new again for a new plot plan, right?
Yes.
I see your point.
But I can agree with the idea of the necessity of undergoing another review from scratch, because of the dynamics in that area have changed so radically that you would almost need to revisit that from day one. And having been in that area several times, I just don't see how we can just go back into prehistory, and I mean before incorporation, to try to justify what their, their plans were under the conditions back then as far as what they are now.
But we have the right to change it, though.
Right, so I guess the deposit-based fee would take care of that issue, because that way, if it's pre-incorporation, they have the deposit paid to do that initial report, so that would sort of take care of that. With regard to the ability to impose additional conditions, that's not currently in, if it's absent from the statute the way it's written, does that give us the power or not give us the power? Do we have to add that language in in order to get it?
We should add the language in if you want to be able to add conditions.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's really important to do. And then, I agree with, I mean, we want the developers to develop. If they've already gotten an approval, and for whatever reason they haven't, I think we should encourage that. So I would, my recommendation would be, we take the 10-year from the date of the original approval date, add a deposit-based fee, and incorporate that into the statute as written.
And Commissioner Phillips is concerned some of these projects are old, they're ugly, they're not gonna fit, but if we have the ability to do added conditions, then we can solve that problem.
Right.
Don't have to worry about how far back we go.
Okay.
What do we think of that? Any comments on that? Any other comments or changes suggested? All right, so I guess we'd be looking for a motion to approve with the recommendations of the commission. Care to take that bull by the horns? Commissioner Madrid?
If I could word it correctly. If I could word it correctly, sure. You have a resolution, and just to clarify, the section five on the resolution, that's actually incorrect based on the errata that we gave to you, so if you are gonna make a motion based on the resolution, I'd ask that you make explicit that section five is replaced by with, with the text in the errata. Okay, I make a motion that the section five is replaced with the section of the errata. For the addition of the errata. We need a full motion with the resolution name. Sorry, with the, with the resolution number, and then you can add in that change.
With the recommendations.
Retroactivity and the maximum 10-year time and the ability to...
Yes.
And do we need to include the deposit-based fee language in the statute?
No. The fees, we have a separate resolution for, and so that will be presented to the council. We don't want that in the ordinance, because fees can change.
Right. Okay.
So it's, I move that we accept resolution number PC 16 dash 255 and replace it with the errata. And the changes suggested by commissioners.
Second.
All right, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Doty. Commissioner Madrid.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
And Chair Carwin.
Yes.
We gotta get you on the record, that's what I'm saying.
Make you popular.
All right, moving on, item 9.3, Parks, Trails, Open Space and Recreation Master Plan. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, our Community Services Director, Robert Lennox, has a staff report.
He's appeared at the podium for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Carwin and commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to give you a little update on the work that the department and the community has been doing on this project. And to give you a quick background, as you've probably seen from some of the news, the plan has actually gone before the Park, Recreation, and Trails Commission, as well as the City Council for a quick review prior to us bringing it back as a resolution for your consideration, and then, of course, the recommendation to City Council for adoption by resolution as well. As a courtesy, though, I want you guys all to see this, and obviously, there's some housekeeping in doing the adoption of the resolution to make it a background document to the general plan. So without further ado, I'm going to get through this as quickly as I can to give you guys a snapshot of what has gone into the process and what the results of that plan provide to the, to the city. And so the city staff has partnered up with RGM Design Group, actually well-renowned landscape architect and planning organization based out of San Juan Capistrano to conduct this. They've had a number of plans under their belt, including the city Marietta. I think they did a revision to Temecula's, San Bernardino's. They have a long list, inland empire cities as well as coastal and Orange County cities. First step for them, though, included a quick background in understanding what our inventory currently is in the city. And so on the screen, you'll see basically a map of all of our existing facilities. This incorporates not only city facilities, but also Valleywide facilities. And of course, I think most of you know, the city is bifurcated by the 215 with facilities that are on the east side of the freeway, primarily owned and operated by Valleywide Park and Recreation District, and the cities to the east, or sorry, to the west, owned and operated by the city of Menifee. On the map, as you'll see, though, these are radiuses of service areas around each of those facilities.
Technical question, you do, you just said?
Sure.
The west sides own and operate by Valleywide.
Other way around.
The east sides own and operate, I'm sorry, by Valleywide. There's a study going on whether we, the city will take that over. So does Valleywide own Wheatfield Park or just maintain it?
They own and maintain it.
So if the city were to take it over, do we have to purchase all those parks?
No, the legal opinion so far is that the taxpayers have already paid for those, and so if a detachment process is agreed upon by LAFCO, those resources, those facilities become owned by the city, and we wouldn't need to pay for them, because that essentially would be paying twice. The city residents pay twice for it, so. So this, these radiuses around each facility show the reasonable service areas for residents living in and around them to accommodate their recreational needs. And of course, you can see some circles aren't full, because they go across main arterials where typically folks who are walking to a facility wouldn't cross a street. They would have to jump in a car to get to that facility or cross that major thoroughfare. And of course, all of these graphs charts are in the plan as well. What's on the screen now is just a table of what you saw on the map to give you a breakdown of each of the amenities at each of those parks. Again, this is the inventory that currently exists. And of course, we also looked at the school facilities, because when we do a study like this, we want to incorporate all possible opportunities for the public to recreate. Public schools are considered public facilities and can be used by the general public for use as soon as the school day is concluded. So you'll find at the end, one of the recommendations is to do joint use opportunities with school districts to utilize those facilities. And then finally, as you may recognize this map, it's from the general plan and includes the proposed trails network that was part of the general plan and part of the Trails Committee back at the very beginning of the city's incorporation. This was essentially a wish list of trails and trail network system they wanted to see in the city as we grew. And so the first component after the inventory is done to gather more information is community participation. That was achieved by these five steps on the screen here, stakeholder interviews, community workshops, sports organization questionnaires, telephone survey, and online questionnaire. I'll give you a quick understanding of each of those. First, on the stakeholder interviews, I think for the most part, I think a couple of you, Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Thomas, were both part of the commission at the time and received invitations to be a part of those interviews. That was extended to all commissions and committees, as well as...
That's Lisa Silvek's exhibit. I was there when she presented that.
That's right. That's right. And so there was a series of questions that came from that, and all the feedback was incorporated into some of the plan analysis. The next step was community workshop. There were three of these held and well-publicized to the public, and various, a series of questions asked of the public in charrette format, and then presented back to the group to identify some of the trending items that each of the groups, the breakout groups, found were important. Some of you may have attended those as well. The next was the sports organization questionnaire. This is where we did an inventory and sent out a survey to all of the youth sports groups, also... also some adult ones as well, Little Leagues, Pony, AYSO, all of those typical groups, to get figures on their membership and their use needs. And then the phone survey, 300 calls that were statistically significant sample size of the city, and if you can't see it on the screen, it certainly is in the plan to show the demographics of, of those households that were reached. Again, these were only Menifee residents, not, not any area codes outside of the city. And then finally, the online questionnaire, about 616 valid responses to this, meaning no duplication, and we look for trends of people trying to skew data by encouraging their friends to do the survey, and yes, that does happen, believe it or not. And so, once that was completed, the consultant had the task of assimilating, assembling all that data and making some sense of it, so that when, when there were recommendations, it was traced back to what the community needed and wanted. It was compared against what our current inventory was and is to provide a roadmap of what we need moving forward. So what you'll see on the screen here is basically our needs, our deficiencies, and facilities demanded currently through 2015, and as you can see there, I won't go through each one, but these are specific athletic amenities. Some of them are passive, some of them are active, softball all the way down to trails for both biking and running. And then, a surplus deficit on those for 2015 currently, you see that yellow column in the middle shows our surplus deficit, and then, once you incorporate the school facilities, those that we don't currently have joint use agreements for, but would intend to have as the plan is implemented over the years ahead, the remaining surplus deficit in the far right column. And then, of course, the same exercise is done for the 2035 projection, because this is a growing city, as you know, and with all the development going on, many of the applications that come across this body for consideration, population numbers change, and so do the number of homes in the community.
Hey, let me stop you for one second.
Sure.
So this, this column here, that's in yellow on this, is that compared to how many we have now, or, explain to me what the city's surplus deficit means?
Sure, yeah, so basically, for a demand need, a number of residents at a point in time, so if we go back even to the 2015 one, as you can see, this is based off our current population. Well, there's a growth, and there's a, a growth projection between now and 2035, so instead of it being 85,000, what it is today, 85,000 residents in the city, 2035, it's going to be, I believe it's 110,000 was the estimate, so that's why the number is different on each of these. So if we go forward--
So, but the number here, where it says, like in this one here, it says minus 10.8 for baseball fields organized youth, is that 10.8 fields?
Correct.
So, in order to meet the projected need of the population, we would need 10.8 more fields?
That's correct.
Alright, I understand that.
Yeah.
So we'd need 28 more soccer fields to meet the population expectation by 2035?
That's correct.
Okay.
So in reality, the baseball and softball could be combined for a negative 22 ba--
Yeah.
All organized baseball slash softball fields.
It's a good point. To clarify, that's a, a common conception, is that the, the field type could double. The only challenge is that they're constructed, they're, they're constructed differently. There are very few facilities in other agencies even where they do combine them, and usually those user groups complain constantly.
Yeah, well, I think there's two baseball fields in this town, then.
True.
Cuddy, Murphy, has grass, and Field 6 at Wheatfield.
That's correct.
Has grass. All the others are multi-use, so.
That's correct. And so, based off of the feedback from the surveys, from the inventories, and everything else on your screen here, you'll see, facilities needs summary is based off of what the community said they want, what the inventory currently shows, and what our deficit or surplus will, will, demands in 2015 and onward. And, of course, you can look a little bit closer, these are just some of the top priorities identified through the community workshops. Essentially showed in the raw data here that aquatic facilities and swim pools, competitive pool, or water park was a top vote getter, so to speak, from the community feedback, followed by things like baseball, regional park, and others, and--
Can we stop at that word you just said, because I was just gonna ask you about it?
Sure.
You said regional park, is that, you define that as a community center, regional multi-use intergenerations center, is that what you're finding in regional park?
It was pulled directly from the feedback from the community members, and so we didn't want to wordsmith too much to misinterpret what their intent was. As you'll see in a future slide, we do try to consolidate and categorize the feedback to try and say, alright, this type of facility could host, let's say, five of the amenities that the, that the community wanted, so that we didn't have such a huge disparity of, you know, all number one priorities, or, you know, 10 number fives, or something like And so, when you, when we do do the categorizing and, and then prioritize based off the number of vote getters, this is actually the final breakdown. Essentially, city of Menifee residents were very adamant that they wanted to see more trails in this city. You, you may drive around now and say, yeah, I see a trail there, I see a trail there. Unfortunately, the challenge is, there hasn't been an inventory of those trails, and some of those trails don't connect to each other. So there's no rhyme or reason about how those trails got installed, or even if they're public or private trails. And then, of course, as you go down the list here, you can see the popularity sort of weens continuing on, but for the most part, everything in the highest priority facilities is what the plan focuses on for the future, immediate future development. And so what does that mean? Distribution throughout the city currently looks like this. This is very similar to the map I showed you at the beginning of the slideshow, and it, and this lays out all city parks, all valley-wide parks, and then, future locations. When I say future locations, today, there's approximately, for subdivisions that we know of, in some phase of entitlement or, or construction even, about 27 projects, meaning 27 projects that have park amenities scheduled to come onboard on the city. So, this throws everything on the map at one time.
Are most tot lots or slightly larger parks when a development goes in, are they dedicated to the city, or is it an HOA taken directly?
It's a bit of both, to be quite honest, and at the, at the end, I'll kind of provide a distinction between the two, and the decision-making that has to go into that. And so, I'll, this map actually then overlays on top of that, the future, the future city sites, as well as the joint use opportunity sites, which would be schools in particular. So, once that's on here, you can see the map fully, it gets very populated, but you still have rural edges where folks aren't being serviced with that immediate radius around their communities that they could walk to a park. Meaning, if you live down near Scott Road, most likely, you have to jump in a car to get to a park, even when, when all of the current projects are built out, so. And then, of course, same exercise was done on the trail side, as you can see, these are all proposed trail connection opportunities, a mix of bike paths and community and regional trails. This is what the final product looks like. This would essentially replace, or I should say, be in addition to the maps that are part of the general plan, and what we would have developers comply with when they're building their projects. And this is the same, this is all of the products that are on, on our radar, coming up, the 27 or so that are on our radar with the amenities of each one that we know of, at least today. They can change, obviously, when they get to construction drawings, or when they get to conceptual design phase, the amenities can shift around, as you see, some of those we don't know what they are, that's why it says no data, because we don't have any conceptual designs yet to know what, what will go in them, but we know what we, what we will need in them. As an example, the city's surplus on, on tot lots is quite high, so we won't be pressing for a lot of those, but it doesn't mean that a community that's, you know, on the fringes of our, our city, may need a tot lot because they don't want to have to drive to the city core to get to one, so.
One more question, sorry if you're gonna answer later. In the general plan, we push in the wording for planning for another regional park on the west side, which is basically gonna take more than just a single development to budget. It's gonna take purchase of large plots of property, maybe some zoning, maybe some encouraging people to go elsewhere. Is that process started as far as, if you identify, maybe over by, by Winko up in there, I know where we're looking, or is there any of the areas of like 25 acre or larger regional park?
The identification of land that's a good candidate is always difficult, because most of it's accounted for. You see a lot of vacant space, but typically, it's, it's wrapped up, somebody owns it, they're, they're probably going to entitle it if they're not already in the process, so that's harder to do. But, for some of the ones that are in the entitlement process, if there are subdivisions that have, let's say, smaller tracts of homes, 100 or less, sometimes, it's not worth having them build a park, and instead, they could pay the Quimby and Lou fee, and Quimby fees that the city collects can only be used for the acquisition of land. So, they could pay us the fee, and we use those dollars to buy pieces of land that we can put together for a regional park development, east or west side. There is an opportunity site, as, as you may see in the, toward the end of the plan itself, in the text, that is on the east side of the freeway, not the west, that has the opportunity to be a pretty big regional park space, and we've been talking with the developer about that. They'll, they'll be resubmitting a map to you, to you, actually, first, and, and you'll have first, first crack at that. And so, ultimately, when we look at the, those sports facilities, this is the final surplus deficit, as we can see it, for 1535, I basically just consolidated column from the other graphs to show you what is still needed. Again, this incorporates the, the pieces of information from the school joint use opportunities as well. As you see, though, on the jogging, I'm sorry, on the jogging and walking and bike paths, we do not have data for existing and further. One of our action items for starting as early as next year is doing a trail inventory. And so finally, a couple of notes I want to end with are, one, we consider park dedication acceptance. When a applicant comes in with a plan, our primary goal, per the findings of this study, is to encourage them to build or contribute to the building of parks that are equal to or greater than five acres, okay? Anything less than that, it is really the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission and staff to decide, is this an amenity we want to take on? When I'd say take on, typically, if you, if a city accepts a park that's less than five acres, and there's gonna be multiple, multiples of them, it splits the city's resources, even if it is funded, say, by, in this case, our citywide CFD. That's our new go-to funding mechanism for public facilities. Instead of having a single set of meters for park improvements, we may have, you know, two here and two, three blocks away, and a few more, two blocks away from there, and our, our, all of our contracted maintenance has to jump around to do that maintenance. So, it actually, it exponentially increases the cost of maintenance to have multiple small park facilities versus having a single large one for, as a community park for a, a couple of communities. So, that's the first point. Obviously, it doesn't include and shouldn't apply to HOA or private facilities, so you may have applicants that come forward and want to do small tot lots in their communities. We encourage that, we just would say to them, hey, you're gonna want to build that into your HOA costs, so that your, your new homeowners understand what, you know, where their dollars are going. Trails inventory project, as I mentioned, that's a top priority for us in fiscal year 15, I'm sorry, 16, 17. Regional sports park planning, as Commissioner Thomas was mentioning, and then, we currently are working on a five-year parks capital improvement program, which seeks to upgrade all of our existing facilities, some of which were here long before the city even incorporated. And the, the plan has findings of all of our deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed as part of, you know, achieving the goals of this plan. So for this evening, the recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and adopt planning, adopt resolution number PC-16-5, I'm sorry, 254, recommending the city council adopt the Parks Trails Open Space and Recreation Master Plan as a background document to the city of Menifee general plan. That concludes my presentation.
One more question, regards to, if we take some action by the planning commission, by the way, we look at projects as we're planning for us, or we change our philosophy and say, okay, because I've always been a proponent of tot lots at minimum, but if we take the philosophy that, okay, from now on, we still want a tot lot, because I think it's beneficial to housing projects, but HOA, you now have to bear that burden, and we need your Quimby somewhere else.
That, yes.
So, I think that maybe we reminded about when projects come for us, could it shift to thinking we want to--
Yes, and I'll add another caveat to that. We will be bringing back to the planning commission, hopefully in a month or so, revisions to the Quimby ordinance that will insert a, a chapter regarding credits for Quimby, meaning, if they want to install an HOA improvement, or if they've over-dedicated parkland, what does a developer get? So that'll be coming back to you shortly.
I have a question, that in December, this went in front of the, the Trails Commission and the city council, so what exactly did they approve, or why, I guess there's a little, we're out of order, we are, so I'm curious of what, what did the city council, what was their action?
Their, their action was simply to provide feedback on the plan, and their only comments were essentially, they wanted to ensure that things like the aquatics facility, essentially one that's just out of our northern border, were part of the calculation for facility inventory, which we did our best to do. The, the real challenge, though, is that if you live down, let's say, for example, anywhere south of Newport, and you want to go to a pool facility, you probably don't have the access to get into a car and get up there. So it's hard to incorporate that, but those were the types of feedback we got from city council. It was very minimal. Their feed, their, their acknowledgement was that the plan was pretty well put together and very thorough. They, they realized that manipulating the plan would essentially override the feedback from the community, which sort of defeats the purpose of the plan. It, it's intended to be what the community wants, so that's what it represents. For that reason, they didn't have much to say.
Yeah, I mean, I, I watched the YouTube thing, so it was pretty cool. Feeling nice, a lot of research there, that was nice.
Do we contribute fees on a regular basis to the Aquatics Center in Paris?
No, the city, I think initially, provided some resources to its construction, but after that, has not.
I have one question, and this was, with regards to the joint use with the school districts, now, do we share O&M costs, or do we bear the burden for O&M costs as a result of that joint use?
It varies from agency to agency, and will depend on what the structure of those joint use agreements look like. So, I've been in, I've worked in agencies where there was no cost to the city, and instead of the cost, they did an exchange of in-kind. So, we get to use the city's, you know, multipurpose field in exchange, they get to use our pool, we don't have a pool here, but in prior agency, they get to use our pool for their swim meets. That's a great example of just a swap of in-kind, but I've been in other agencies where you did have to pay a rate, although it was at a reduced cost. Basically, the rate was at their cost to maintain that turf. Sometimes, they allow you to use their facilities, as long as you provide some minimal reimbursement to them, a portion of, a fraction of, the actual maintenance costs. It's typically not full burden.
Okay, will that be secured by agreement, or use agreement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there? I see one of the high priority facilities here is football. I don't know a lot of communities that have a public football field, they're usually associated with some sort of, of school or something like that. Are we talking about building a city of Menifee football complex? What does that mean?
Well, again, the, the terms that are placed in there are the ones that came from the community. Our interpretation would mean, we want a multi-use field, we use for anything, and if there's a football team that wants to use it, like Junior All-American or Pop Warner, then they will. They'll have the opportunity to. The, the football inventory that we did is primarily the ones that are at the schools, so taking into account Heritage High School and Paloma High School, they actually have dedicated fields that are striped for football, so that's why that term shows up.
I see, and there's been bouncing around for years, the, the concept of using Salt Creek for soccer fields, I've heard people saying that for years, is that a viable thing, or is that just a pipe dream?
You're probably referring to Paloma Wash, and it was a dream at one point, and it precedes my time here. Typically, you cannot do sports facilities in a channel. You can sometimes get away with them in a, like a basin, you know, a shallow basin, it just means once you get to your 10, 100, or 50-year storm events, you have a pretty significant maintenance cost that you have to get, be ready for, so.
So that's not something that's being even-- So that's not something that's being even considered, I hope?
No.
Isn't there our flood control district problem with the Paloma Wash? I think that we did some comments on some projects in that area and it came to find out that the flood control district owns that ditch over there. And so I thought that that was just excluded from all sus- consideration.
Well, I think the exclusion of having athletic fields in it was for a different reason, meaning it's not sustainable.
Right.
The end result though is I believe currently the city maintains a portion of the wash, sides and bottom, and I'm sure Yolanda can probably weigh in on that. I think had either of us been there earlier, we probably would have said something to the contrary, but we have what we have.
Yeah, my understanding is that the city is actually responsible for the maintenance of the Paloma Wash. The ownership, though, I'm not exactly sure.
Any other technical questions for staff?
Just one little correction, on the existing public school facility, Hans Christensen Middle School has two baseball fields, or I guess you would call them softball fields, but they have two.
Okay.
Fields. I want to, because baseball, I know for baseball, we rent them out once a day, like Sam comes in, but.
Okay, I'll definitely take a look.
All right, thank you. All right, well, at this point, I guess we'll open the public hearing at eight eleven PM. Do we have a properly noticed hearing?
Yes, sir, we do.
Any correspondence received on this issue?
No, sir.
Any public speakers?
No, sir.
All right. Having heard from the city, we can close the public hearing at eight twelve. Any comments from the commission, anything we need to discuss about this? Seems pretty cool to me. This is just a tremendous amount of work that went into this. It is so thorough, well-done and reflects the needs of the community. I was actually involved in the interviews for this and I remember them coming in a meeting with us and I just can't believe how many hours this probably took to put together, so. Commissioner Phillips, do we have a hundred typos to deal with?
No, sir, not on this document.
Pass.
I would like to echo, I would like to echo your comments there. This is a very well-done document. I, I found myself really, really enjoying reading some of this. All of my little nitpicky questions were answered. And I think it's because I was a minor part of this project. I was in one of the interviews. And so please extend my kudos to all of those people who put a lot into this.
Yeah, absolutely, it's very well done. So I don't want to risk turning this into a Parks and Rec meeting. So any other comments?
Actually, I do. As well as it is well-written, I have a very serious concern. The way the aggregates are added up, I completely disagree that the need for an aquatic facility is higher than any of the baseball, softball fields. You look at the table, three point eight dash two, which broke them all down, the aquatics, which scored nine points.
He's referring to page seventy-two of the materials, in case anybody wants to take a look at it.
There's no other water-based activity. So all the water activities were added together into one. But then when you, and it got a total score of nine. Or wait, no, twelve, twelve. But then when you take baseball, softball, football, lights, everything that's basically represented in Wheat Field, I get an aggregate of forty-four versus twelve. You know, that's three and a half times more the needs for more baseball, softball, that kind of stuff. So on page eighty-seven, where it makes the recommendation, the city should explore opportunities to plan and for construction of an aquatic facility, I have a serious issue with the number-one priority and recommendation by this report to be an aquatic center. Especially when we've got the one up to the north. Of Trumbull, and talking to a member of the Riverside County Parks and Trails Commissioner on that, he told me that that pool loses one million dollars a year. And for that to be our city's number-one recommendation is a huge financial hit to the city on top of the costs versus when I add up the aggregates of all the sports facilities. And I am a member of the Menifee Pony Baseball and Softball Board. I represent the, we call it the Pino Division of seven and eight-year-olds. My, I have fourteen teams, just seven and eight-year-olds. My teams get one hour a week on the dirt. And that is the number-one complaint that we get from parents, coaches, everything, is the amount of dirt time that our teams get. So I have, I'm voting no tonight purely based on the fact that I cannot prioritize an aquatic center above additional sports fields. So I would, and I know this issue was addressed both in the city council. They made comments about it, the Parks and Trails Commission made comments on it. And there was no revisions or anything done to the report, so I was a little disappointed on that. Obviously, being on the board for Pony, that I was looking forward to this report and I was kind of bummed to see that there was no recommendation of a master park on the west side of the two fifteen. I look at Birdsall Park in Temecula, you know, Los Alamos Sports Park in Marietta. I played at both, my kids have played at those. And when you show up to those, it's like, all right, I'm here to play a sport, here we go. You know, you show up to Wheat Field, you can hear it. Now, my kids play, we used to play soccer in Marietta, but now we play the Menifee YSO. And you roll up to a facility like that and you get that, that feel, I'm here to play a sport, you know, versus I go to Discovery Park and it's just the one park. So I don't know, I would have loved to see some type of recommendation for a centralized sports facility park on, you know, the west side. Because if we don't do it now, it's going to be too late. All these guys who have entitlements, they're going to build and we're not going to have another opportunity. It's going to be built on and it's gone, so.
Don't we have that huge area south of?
Of, off of Scott Road? It's right behind the, what's that, Paloma School, High School?
Yeah.
Huge area of land.
There's about twenty acres that straddles Craig Road. A portion is north of Craig and a portion is south, right next to the KB Track and the New Meritage Homes tracks and then Paloma Valley High. I believe it's in the plan. I don't recall what the, I don't think we have a concept plan yet for that park, but there is a water course that runs through it, so it's not twenty acres of developable land.
Oh, okay.
But there's also the ten-acre sports park in Simiron Ridge and that's on the west side of the city. So that'll, that'll have, I think, at least two baseball fields and a soccer field. So it's not twenty-five acres, but it helps.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, I was at Wheat Field two Saturdays ago and Valleywide had a softball tournament there. And those are moneymakers for this town. You know, if you can come, now, well, now we got big league dreams that we compete against, but those are moneymakers. I mean, because it brings people in from all over the state, they stay in our hotels when we get them. You know, they eat in our restaurants, there's a tax revenue there. There's a, I mean, sports are huge when it comes to that stuff. I know kids that, you know, there's travel ball teams that are six years old, which is a little ridiculous, but they go all around, you know? And we, and I called the Menifee Little League, got their numbers. I called Menifee ASA Softball and I know the Menifee numbers and there's sixteen hundred kids playing baseball and softball right now.
In this area?
And this, in the City of Menifee, those three organizations. And then there's travel ball teams on top of that. So I just, I have a very difficult time approving an aquatic center. And I know this is what it is, but I can't simply approve something based on that one thing that I completely disagree with.
I tend to agree in that, I don't think I'm going to disapprove it, but my disappointment is that we really do need a west-side regional park. That's really got to be the focus. And it's kind of a step, a stepchild thing, but a while back, we were talking about under the Edison lines and then we could get an easement there and then add some parcels next to it and maybe get our twenty-five, thirty acres there. So have you talked about the feasibility of the financing of the Aquatics Center? Because they were going to put it down over by Paloma High School, right, that park over there?
So what Lisa's referring to is what we call, at least in concept, is Evans Park. And it does straddle, I think it's Craig, is that not, yes, Craig.
It's on page one sixteen and one seventeen.
Yes, and it does have an aquatic element to it. It has even prior to this plan beginning. But again, as a concept, it can be anything. It doesn't have to be that, it can evolve into something else. The final figures that are in the plan for a recommendation do take into account all those future facilities. And what I hear from the commission is similar to what I heard from the Parks Commission, it doesn't seem to be consistent with what resources are currently there. But when you take into account the twenty-seven-plus projects that are on the books coming forward, those numbers change. As Lisa mentioned, when you look at projects like Simiron Ridge or Menifee Heights or others that have planned additional baseball, softball, multipurpose fields, all of those, they skew these numbers, that's why it changes and that's why you'll have things like aquatics higher up. Recall though, too, that even the drop zone water park is outside of the city boundary. So if you live in the City of Menifee, unless you're north of, say, McCall, you probably aren't going to make that trip to go and swim in that pool. It's just a logistical issue for most people. They don't have transportation and they want easier access to get to those amenities. So that's why the plan shows what it shows and it takes into account all the future planning that's currently on the books.
I recall that we had some controversy with the Simiron Ridge project, that the developer had attached some strings to that ten acres.
I'm not familiar with strings.
I remember we discussed that and in a number of ways, he put up that park almost as hostage for some other stuff that he wanted done in those five phases. I would seriously take a look at including those ten acres in there until we find out something definitive from the Simiron Ridge developers as to whether or not they're going to go ahead and come through with that dedication of land.
Mr. Lennox, taking the comments into consideration by commissioners, I see this is a background document, correct?
Yes.
That you're asking us to adopt?
Correct.
Therefore, can you also call it an evolving document?
All park master plans are, they can be modified. If we do anything significant, we would just re-adopt them by resolution.
So Commissioner Doty's comments could be addressed?
They can be addressed, we just, we wouldn't.
After adoption?
Yes, but we wouldn't want to modify what the community's feedback is and because of what the future plans are for projects that are on the books, we can't skew those numbers simply because we don't currently today see X number of baseball fields. We base it off of the number of fields that are planned.
Yeah, but I mean, my biggest concern is, I came up with an aggregate of forty-four. If you're going to combine all the water and aquatic stuff to one group, combine all the sports stuff, baseball, softball, lights, you know, the regional park, to me, that's, can be grouped together to an aggregate of forty-four compared to twelve. So when I look at those two numbers, I mean, a sports park blows away an aquatic center.
And I think there's a, there's a component of perspective there, right? Because you could also aggregate lights for aquatic facilities. You could aggregate other amenities for aquatic facilities that would raise that number as well. So there's a balance here. We took uniquely, uniquely water features and placed those with aquatic facilities. This is, this is really at the advice of the consultant, who's done several of these in other cities and found that this is the best way to achieve it. It's less likely that you would put, especially in this day and age, you would put splash pad features at a park anymore because they waste a lot of water, even on recycled tank systems. So that's why they're combined. Certainly, there are other ways to look at it. I hear everything that's being said here, especially by Commissioner Doty.
Well, one thing I do know about the drop zone is Paloma and Heritage both use it as their home field, so to speak, for their water sports, swim team, water polo. These are evolving sports, boys and girls, along with club sports that happen over there. So with Paloma getting a, I guess Paloma has a plan to put a pool onto their grounds? Is that still part of their plan? It used to be on the board.
And I'm glad you brought it up. I did speak with the superintendent about it just two weeks ago and it's cost prohibitive for them right now, so they have other projects that have a little higher priority. But when we talk with them about joint use opportunities and a potential, you know, facilities, aquatic facility at Evans Park site, that is a huge interest for them. Because we'd be able to reduce our cost of construction by partnering with the school. They wouldn't have to bear that full cost on their own. Of course, they'd have water time for their teams and Heritage being the same boat, although they are closer to the drop zone. Paloma likely is the biggest candidate for that joint use opportunity at Evans Park.
And I suppose when the new high school is built, they would also be able to share in that?
Assuming that that would be a part of the city boundaries, yes, that's a, that's a potential.
Okay. So can you meet Commissioner Doty's demand for more softball facilities?
Like I said, I can't change the number, but I can put a footnote in the report and ensure that when it becomes part of city council's final resolution adoption, they understand the feedback that was provided by the commission.
I mean, can we change the recommendation from aquatics? I mean, because, I mean, to the point of that it's not, you know, sports-related, but I added baseball, football, lighted sports fields, multi-use sports fields, soccer fields, softball, sports complex. I mean, that's not water-based, that's not lights on a pool. Those were lighted sports fields, so. I, the only way I'm voting yes is if the recommendation switches from aquatics to sports park. I mean, it's, and it's, because I mean, these concerns were both set at city council and the Parks and Trails. And yet, I just, I don't know.
Well, the recommendation.
I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but.
Yeah, the recommendation from city council was to incorporate the drop zone inventory or to include the drop zone in the aquatic inventory, which essentially all that would do is reduce the aquatic number, it wouldn't change anything else. It would say that we have a higher surplus of water than we truly have. Their recommendation wasn't necessarily to aggregate all the other facilities so you have one multi, call it a regional park or a sports complex, aggregate those to have a higher number. I did not interpret their feedback to mean that. I think they were really focusing on ensuring that the drop zone facility was incorporated into the inventory that is an existing city resource.
But Menifee dollars are not going, they're not staying here, they're going to Paris.
Correct.
So I have to concur with what Commissioner Doty is saying. I like the logic of his argument. And at the same token, I'm thinking about migrating dollars out of here for a sports event when we could change all of that.
You know, and the one thing too, that Mayor Van brought up, he goes, which we didn't have the slide presented them, was that in the phone interviews, Aquatics Center ranked eleventh. But yet, it's still the number-one recommendation in this report. So I don't, I don't make that comparison, how that happened, but I think I'm done talking. I think I've beat the horse twice now, so I feel bad for him.
You know, some of it will also have to do with the available facilities. Some of it has to do with, with timing and budget and location and all of that. So, all right.
I do want to throw, this is a beautiful report, it's very well done. Very well detailed, you threw schematics of future parks. It was very well put together. I mean, I'm not bashing the whole report, it's just the way the math, I'm a math guy and the way the numbers don't add up, so.
Well, you're.
In any way, do I want to say this? In any way do I want to say this is a, a bad report by staff. It's, it's a great report, very well done. It's just I don't agree with the number-one recommendation by a lot.
Understood. I, I, and, and as a baseball parent, I understand exactly where you're coming from. We, we certainly interact with them on a frequent basis and we understand the need.
I get a lot of emails on that.
Yeah.
Further comments? No? All right, well, now is the time to act. Would anyone care to make a motion regarding resolution number PC sixteen dash two fifty-four?
I would get motion to adopt. PC sixteen two fifty-four with a footnote of desired additional concentration on game fields.
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Doty?
No.
Commissioner Madrid?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips?
Yes.
Chair Carwin?
Yes. All right, we have a recommendation to city council. Hey, Mr. Lennox, while I've got you here, let me just ask you, I was going to ask Mr. Rosen tomorrow, but since you're here, I've noticed that at La Ladera Park and at Marsh Park, there's a big medallion carved out on the monument sign, so what's going on with that?
The city's undergoing rebranding right now and that's going to be the future home of our, well, this logo right here, so it'll be.
All right, that's what, when's that going to happen?
On Friday, they get installed.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Monday they get installed, Friday we coat, we graffiti coat the monuments.
At first, I thought it had been vandalized, it looks, but now that I see it, there's a plan. Okay. With no discussion items on the agenda tonight, any commentary from the Community Development Director?
No comments tonight, thank you.
No comment. Commissioner reports on committee activities. I will report that we are in the midst of Citizens Advisory Committee block grants tomorrow. We're going to be hearing from the block grant applicants to dole out some well-needed funds and so that will be freewheeling action if anybody wants to come and sit in and listen to the Boys and Girls Club pitch and other folks. So that'll be going on and then we'll probably have another meeting. We, we rate them and then we issue the funds based on that. We have to get it done tomorrow because we're running up against a deadline, so. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, I guess that means we adjourn at eight thirty-three.
Technically, someone needs to make a motion.
What, do we have a motion to adjourn?
A move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in adjournment.